All right, we're gonna open the meeting, 6:30.
Recording in progress.
Do you have a motion to adopt the agenda? Or any need to amend it?
Go ahead.
Second.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, anything on the meeting minutes of May 3rd? Any corrections? Okay, town managers report?
Chad and I attended a municipal roads general permit seminar on May 3rd in Rowland. This was basically training on how to use the new MRGP website that municipalities choose to update drainage and culvert work that we complete on our local roads. They didn't have the software ready yet, so it was kind of an interesting training without the software. Networked with Vtrans on May 8th to go over proposed sidewalk repairs and replacement along Route 7 in the Village area. We have submitted the required 1111 permit with work plans to Vtrans and are awaiting approval, hopefully this week we hear back on that. Attended the May 9th Otter Creek Communications Unit District Meeting. It was just a reorganization, so not much was discussed. It was also Rep. Tony Freyro's last meeting, he's taking on another job, so his letter of resignation is in here. We starting bi-weekly payroll next week with ADP. We're also getting our first six months of payroll services for free with the company.
Nice.
Unfortunately, the change has not been well received by the union, so we'll see how that plays out. The police department has submitted a cops grant. We're awarded this grant, will cover the cost of a full-time officer for three years, which will allow us to take one of our part times to go full-time, and then the fourth year, we would be on the hook for the fourth year, so. Submitted a claim for the fabric covering on the sand shed, we're getting a little run around on that with, the company was sold, so we'll see how that works out. Received a letter from Vtrans Traffic Operations stating they will be performing a traffic study per request to extend the 25 mile an hour speed zone in the Village District, and there was a letter in your packets on that. And, one thing I had to add is the international truck is finally back, and it was on the road today, and it made it through the whole day without having to be towed, so.
Wow.
See how that goes.
Perfect.
That's all I have for this.
Okay. Any select board member remarks?
Was it Regional last night? They're gonna be starting to redo the regional plan. October of this year is when they'll start. They're hoping to have it adopted by April of 2026. So it'll be pretty much a three-year project, or close to it. So, I don't know exactly how they're setting it up. I presume they'll do what they did the last time, which is just have an ad hoc committee that works on it. But they're trying to condense it. I don't know how many pages it is now, but they want to get it down to around 100 or 120 pages for the whole document. So they're trying to streamline it a lot, so. Other than that, Outback Solar was there, made basically the same presentation that they did to us. Of course, I was asked what the town's opinion was, and I said that, you know, they had come to the select board, but I didn't believe they'd come to the planning commission. I guess, I don't know if there was miscommunication, I guess the planning commission was supposed to be at the select board meeting that they were at. I'm not sure how that all, but anyway. So, yeah, so I said we had no opinion, because our planning commission hadn't gotten to us, so. We didn't have to act on it last night, so it's still, I don't know how long it'll be before we have to act on it, so.
They never reached out to us to come to one of our meetings.
Okay. Okay, well, so you may have to reach out to them or something, and, you know, get them in and go over it. You know, it's the same, it was the same presentation that they gave to us. Whether you agree with it, or we agree with it or not, I don't know. You know, it's all egg soils and whatever.
I know, I thought we had an opinion. Yeah, we were opposed to it.
Oh, okay, I didn't know we had an official opinion. Well, I wasn't at the last meeting, so.
Oh.
Well, we did file the motion to intervene, and stated all of, like Mark's, comments on soils and the landowners, the adjoining landowners' comments, that it wasn't well received. And quite a few of them have filed motion to intervene too, so.
Okay.
I'm pretty quiet lately on that, but.
Yeah.
There was some conversation at, I think it was our March 15th meeting, actually, when the planning commission was here last time to discuss the topic we're discussing tonight, and it was brought up, I actually looked at the minutes, that we were going to invite Outback Solar to, I think, the April 5th meeting, so. It was discussed then in that meeting, there wasn't any official invitation that went out, but.
Was there any decision from the Regional?
No, we didn't have to make a decision, so it's locked.
No, it's still pretty early in the process, right?
I guess, some of these things, it's weird, some of them, they come to us and we have to make a decision on them, some of them, they come to us for two years before we make a decision on them. I've never really figured out the rhyme or reason to how they do it.
Just to back up, Kevin, there was, they did submit to the planning commission that they had an intent, but then they withdrew it. The, no, they put it on hold, they said they were, they were reevaluating it, and I don't know for what reason, but it did.
Well, yeah, I remember that, because I remember they were talking about it, and then I thought it went away, and then the next thing, I know it's back again. So, I assumed they'd withdrawn it, but if they put it on, I didn't realize it was a hold, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, there's been some confusion.
But the way their leases, Mike Norris, I believe, will speak better than I can, but the way their leases are, they tie the land up for a period of time, and I guess they can do anything within that period of time, correct, Mike?
Yeah, it's a lease option agreement, is traditionally what's done, which gives a developer a pre-specified period of time in which to, you know, do some due diligence and figure out whether it's a feasible site or not, whether a permit can be achieved, and whether it's a viable site. So, that typically will be two, three, up to five years, depending on what the lawyers negotiate between the host and the developer. This is unsolicited, this is a larger topic that has a lot more details involved in it. As a, for instance, as a developer, they don't need to come and get a letter of support from the town of Regional Planning at all to get a CPG, they just need to meet the state's requirements, unless there's any specific ordinance or statutes that a town of Regional Planning has that prohibits it, and that's as of 2017. So whether they come here and make a presentation, I've sat on both sides of the desk, and I've watched six of them, and people will say, "You're a solar developer, what do you think? Or what's your feeling about this project?" And I can ascertain that it doesn't matter what I think as a planning commission member, or what you think as a select board member, because we have no statutes or ordinances specifically to limit or curtail a solar project from being built in our town. So, we can love it, hate it, or be lukewarm about it, it really doesn't matter at this point. So, I'm just putting it out there, and I have to repeat, this is a much larger discussion.
Oh, no, it is, it is.
I'm just, I hope I'm trying to shed some light on that.
Yeah. Oh, no, I know, and ultimately, the state's gonna do what the state's gonna do.
It's not the state, we have the ability, what's made it very confusing is before 2016, this all started in 2008. 2008, someone really wanted investors and developers to be confident about putting solar up in Vermont. So, he stripped the towns and regional boards of the ability to veto any of these projects. So if they met the state criteria, they got the certificate of public good and went forward, then they could just start building, and we might, the town might get a notice, but not an invitation to comment, because this is, you're just being notified that it's happening and it's going forward. Well, there was a petition in 2016, and that was successful with all the towns, most of the towns in Vermont signed it, to say, "Look, we've been stripped of conventional conditional rights for these types of projects. These types of projects, we have veto ability with so many other types of projects, we want, we want rights back for renewable energy projects as well," and that was achieved. So, this whole idea that the state is gonna mandate that we're gonna have solar panels lined up and down along our town roads and neighborhoods, and that's mandated, and there's nothing we can do about it, was the case until 2017. After 2017, we can write into our town plan, we can create solar ordinances, we can have statutes, New Haven, for example, has thousands, thousands, just because of, you know, they have good land, they have, you know, a lot of capacity from a distribution grid standpoint. They've been inundated for the last 10 years. Their policy at this point is, "We've done enough to save the world, not another panel if we can help it." Not another solar panel, we've already done our part, other sun. So, and they've made statutes and ordinances, they've put controls in place. So, it's not, I'm just gonna embarrass repeating. Something can be done about it, just nothing has been done about it. And that's from a regional planning standpoint, and that's on a town level. And, I'm just gonna say for the record, I am saying all this, and I am a solar developer, so I understand the irony in that.
Okay, thanks.
Because I think there's a responsible way of doing it, and there's irresponsible ways of doing it, and unfortunately, there's a lot of examples of irresponsible ways of doing it.
So, can I ask something? You guys had asked the planning commission to write some rules and regulations, maybe we could put in the town plan?
Yes.
Is there a possibility that one of you could come to our next meeting?
Sure.
And discuss them with everybody on the board?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, we just don't want to end up like New Haven, so we want to make sure we have some preferred solar siting in our town plan.
And I think we feel like we've done our part, what the state wants now, we're at that point, where what the state was outlining, we're pretty close to that capacity.
I think there's very plausible ways of really meeting both criteria. I mean, but again, I'm just gonna stop and say, this is all a much larger discussion, I'm not trying to hijack your meeting here, I'm not sure what your agenda is.
Yeah, so maybe a couple of us will go to a planning commission meeting and talk about it more extensively. Okay, good. Any other select board member remarks?
Yes.
Do we have that information on the JCB, the hours, and that year that was purchased? Could we have that for next meeting, please?
What was it, Mark? I didn't hear you.
You reviewed three new tires on the JCB, and one of the questions we brought up and asked for information was, if you were a piece of equipment, how many hours you're on it? Just $5,200, so, $5,208.
Do you have anything else? I guess I'll just mention that Dave and I just went to the OMEA stakeholders' meeting, and they haven't really been, they haven't had a great year, but did reassure us that there's at least, what, 25 years of marble in the two quarries that they're currently?
Okay, yeah, operations for 25 more years are approved.
Yeah, so. There's that. All right, any public comment? All right, the only thing we had for old business was ATV ordinance and personnel policy, which we've already adopted, so we just need to sign. Do you have them down that way?
Do you want to do them now, or?
Um, you know what, we'll wait till when we sign everything. All right, so new business, Village Farm application for Vermont property tax exemption.
Lisa's waiting to get in.
She's in.
She's in, okay.
Nobody's here from the Village Farm, right? Hi, Lisa.
Hey, how are y'all? Nice.
Good.
Sorry to not be there in person, but how to try to explain this, is so, in a nutshell, properties that aren't under statute to be tax exempt may fall in a tax category to apply for a exemption based on public pious or charitable use of the property. So, PBR has an application for this, and a process for this, and the statute calls, or states that the Board of Listers has the authority to grant or deny these applications to taxpayers, and I've always taken that with a little bit of caution. It's real tax dollars that we're making exempt. Of course, we have the authority for the municipal part of it, and then PBR would have to sign off on the education part of it. But in this case, where it's a little less clear-cut, and particularly where I am one person who is not an elected official in your town, but, you know, like a Board of Listers would be, I felt it was more appropriate to bring it to all of you, to consider whether that was something you wanted to grant or entertain. And as Dave and I discussed earlier, if our decision is to deny it, the select board's decision or recommendation to me to make that decision, then the applicant would have the option of going to the DCA to appeal that decision, and then I think it's end of story at that point, at least for that year. I suppose things could change with the property. So, the Pittsburgh Village Farm has submitted a pretty complete application, and I don't have any firm recommendations, I honestly have, you know, some pros and cons I can see, where there are some good things that are going on for the community, but the status of the building itself feels a little bit up in the air, where it is in a serious state of disrepair and need for renovation at this point, and from what I've been understanding through the news and the grants and whatnot and activities that have been going on there, it's a little bit uncertain what exactly the building will be used for. And that's a big question with this application. For example, if a church was tax exempt, or if it was a church mission like a parsonage that was under this kind of application, or a museum, and part of that property was rented on a for-profit basis, that portion of it that is rented, at least, would have to be excluded from the exemption and would be taxable. So, that's the biggest question in my mind with this application, is will it be a childcare center, will it be an apartment building, will it be some combination of those in addition to a public building? So, any other, I guess maybe I should state, the assessment on the property currently is a total of 152,800, of which the bulk of that is the land value for 22.42 acres of $92,300. So the building isn't in for, the building and the barns are in for pretty minimal amounts, given the condition of them, and the total taxes last year were $3,420.
All right, thank you. I don't know, I looked through all the criteria, my thinking is that it would be different if everything was up and running. Like Lisa said, I mean, the building, what's going on in the building is up in the air, so.
Well, I looked through, and they're taking in over $300 a month in rent, that's more than the taxes, they're getting in rent at this point. And we've been assured time and time again that this would never cost the town any money, and now they're asking for this place to cost all of us money.
$3,400.
And I am not in favor of that. I'll say that in an open meeting, I don't care, this is not right.
Okay.
I pretty much agree with Dave on that, but another thing I think I'd like to add to it is, right now, we don't even know what the finished product's gonna be.
Right.
So, would it be wise just to put it on hold until we see more about the finished product, and maybe there might be some information available, what's happening in other towns and other parts of the state with something like this, but.
Yeah.
I know, like Dave said, and I'm a strong believer that the town doesn't need to have any financial ties to that, that's my personal feeling.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, so, can we just table it, or do we have to actually vote to give a recommendation to Lisa?
I think we have to make a recommendation to Lisa, and I will make a motion that we deny this request.
I will second it.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, thank you, have a great night, everyone.
Thanks, Lisa.
Bye.
All right, next, our discussion with the planning commission about our appeal decision, and so, I know there's some strong feelings about this, and so I just want to have it be like, you know, a civil conversation, one at a time, and I don't want to get into rehashing like the actual details of the intersection and bridge, because we've all discussed that at length for a couple of years, so. But happy to either take questions on our decision, or comments that you have individually.
So, I looked through the minutes, and I couldn't come up with your minutes, so I don't know what your decision was, so I guess as a board, we'd like to know how you came up with that decision. I've talked to Dave on the phone, and I heard his side of it, but I don't know if that's the total board's decision, how you changed and why you changed, just so that we, as planning commission members, know why.
Okay.
That's kind of like up in the air, because I couldn't, I've been through, even just now, I looked, there's no minutes on the website from your May 3rd. So I don't, you know, I don't know, you didn't come out of, I looked to see if you guys came out of executive session.
Yep.
I watched it on.
Came out of executive, came out of executive and voted on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, I mean, it wasn't put on peg TV, so it wasn't.
No, but it was on, it was minutes were noted, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
You wrote them up, didn't you?
No.
So where are the minutes?
So where are the minutes, I guess is the question.
That is a good question.
And are they on the website? Maybe I couldn't find them, is what I'm saying.
Because I mean, we have, they were typed, you know, they were printed up.
Can you look them up right now, for us, Dave? They're right here. On the website.
I can.
That would be great, maybe we just can't find them.
No, it's all right here at the end.
Yeah, but you understand what we're saying, is we didn't find them on the website, so we, you guys have them, because somebody was with those copies, so we didn't get those. That's why I didn't know where you came up with your decision.
Oh, okay, all right, no, I didn't, okay, so these, what? These don't go on to the website until they're approved?
I'm sorry?
These don't go on the website until they're approved?
Oh, maybe that's why they're.
I don't know.
No, the draft stuff.
The website's down because of the re.
Oh, the reconfiguration, okay.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
We're redoing the website, so.
So maybe something should put on there to notify people, because I've been looking for a week.
You wouldn't have found anything in the minutes about this anyways, because it was all an executive.
I would have known the vote.
He would have known the vote.
Well, we emailed you guys, though. Well, we emailed Kevin, I'm sorry.
Well, and you said it was unanimous vote, but I noticed that he wasn't at the meeting, so what do you do, call in?
No, he got, he was there.
No, I made it for the executive session.
He was, yeah, he was late, but he was there for executive.
Oh, no, no, I had another. Okay, well, yep, yep.
What were the grounds that it went to executive session?
Attorney client.
Yeah.
What's that?
Legal.
Legal.
Legal. For pending or probable litigation.
We had already discussed that, we had already discussed that with an attorney here, and it was an unanimous decision to do the appeal, so.
Yeah, I guess we're just confused what changed.
Yeah, there was no communication, which I thought was really poor, and I thought, really, it showed a disrespect for the planning commission, and I want to let that be known, I mean, right away, I couldn't believe I'm seeing this on an email, so.
And the email was after the fact that it all happened, didn't even get a phone call from anybody. It was just, this is what you guys decided, and this is the way it is, and we gotta live with it.
Yeah.
And I was asked, we had a special meeting last Wednesday, and I was asked to cancel the meeting. Tom, you were there, and Dave asked me to cancel the meeting, and I shared that with the rest of the planning commission, I'm not the planning commission, I'm on the planning commission, and it just wasn't right.
Kevin, the reason for talking about canceling the meeting was that the board wanted to be present during the conversation, and that it was our, we had a warm meeting for tonight already, that was, on a warm meeting in a public area, where everyone can talk about it, that was the whole purpose behind that, and I think Tom could back me up on that.
We as a board wanted to meet, to talk about what we were gonna talk about here, and I was hoping that we would get invited to this.
And the three of us talked about that, okay, no harm done there.
But you didn't want us to cancel the meeting.
Well, because the board wanted to be in attendance with it, so, I mean, that's not my, that's not my say, this is the select board's say for not being invited to the meeting.
I guess my thing is, why were we not even notified of your decision? It was by email, it wasn't even a phone call. I thought we worked together, not against each other, and we're working against each other at this point.
It's not, and it's not about being against each other, but we're the ones beholden to taxpayers, and we made a decision based on.
But we didn't know that, we didn't know that. I mean, I know it, because Dave told me that when I called him on the phone, but we didn't know that you guys said that, and my question is to the entire board, do you think when you hire a lawyer that it's not gonna cost you something?
Oh, we know.
No, but it was.
So, we should have known the cap, though, what your number was.
It was, I think when this appeal was approved by this board, and I know we had quite a discussion about even approving the appeal, was we did agree to file the appeal because of the time was of the essence. There wasn't a lot of time to make a choice.
Right.
I know at that time, the financial aspects was outlined by the board, because I was pushing, pushed to at least apply for the appeal, and we said, "Okay, we will put the appeal in," but we weren't, no, I don't think anyone on the board was in favor of spending a lot more money on this, and we put it in for a time purposes, and we had a fairly good legal bill come in on it very quickly, which added up from other things going on that wasn't anything we had done.
Right.
Okay, so, that's what the board's decision was, the financial, it wasn't that we were being influenced by a towns person, because that was mentioned to me, that a certain towns person that is educated with this subject was influencing the board, that's not part of it, no. So, on the subject of the financial part of it, I went through the financial part of it, and I find that that particular bill, and correct me if it's wrong, was not very substantial for that part of it. Now, you have the numbers, I don't know if you want me to tell you what I've got.
Go ahead.
I come up with a particular zoning issue that has to do, Act 250 in Florence is $5,115 out of, well, I can tell you the dates. The rest of the zoning is $8,868, and the bridge project is 866. So you think, as a board, correct me if I'm wrong, that zoning issues are worth more financially than people's safety in the historic of Pittsburgh? And I'm just asking as a planning commission member, because I need to know for future planning, whether.
Well, the zoning issue was important to continue with, because it was a violation of a town regulation, so that is important to carry through with, otherwise, that sets a precedent.
Okay, so it is, it's more important, you're saying, than actually safety?
I don't think she said that.
That's what she said.
No, I'm just, I'm trying to clarify, I know you didn't say that, but I'm just trying to. No, I'm trying to clarify, I know you didn't say that, but I'm just trying to clarify that. If you didn't say it, I agree with you.
I'm just saying that they're two, two different issues.
Well, yes and no, but is the issue have to do 100% with the town? I mean, I saw the Florence issue, because I saw a lot of Act 250 to do with that subject. So that's not anything to do with the town of Pittsburgh, that's to do with the state, Act 250, correct?
Yes.
So I'm just curious why the town is involved in something if it's an Act 250 issue, why the town is paying a lawyer to discuss this and argue this?
Because it's a zoning issue.
It's a zoning.
It's, it's not, it's.
It has nothing to do with Act 250, then?
Well, some of it has to do with Act 250, some of it has to do with our zoning.
Okay.
Unfortunately, something got let go for too long.
Okay.
And now it's.
Fighting us.
Fighting us, yes.
All right, well, like I said, I mean, and please, if my numbers are wrong, please correct me.
Okay, so I'm right here, these are the orders we'll sign tonight, Cupford and Blake, planning commission, appeal, I have $2,009 here. So that's different than your 800.
And that's for, what's the date? Just so I know, so if I have it in my records here?
5/11.
And that's coming in from before, so it had already been up over 3, correct?
So, so this is, so it was over 3, you're saying?
3,000.
By 5, 3, by your last meeting?
By our last meeting.
Okay. I just, like I said, I just want to know that, so I know.
Which, again, was a shock considering that there'd only been, you know, statement of questions and the appeal filed, that's it. So.
So I think what Dave just cleared up was, our first, our first bill was in the neighborhood of $1,000 for the appeal.
Right. We had to file it, yep.
Yeah, because that was for the filing. The second one that just came off, for the last few weeks after the appeal was filed, was 2,009. So we're up more like 3,000.
Okay. So, all right.
We've had two bills, but that accumulated, not by our doings.
Well, that's, yeah.
Right. But that's, I mean, they have to do legal stuff, we all know how that works with legal parts of it, that you have to work on and stuff. But, I mean, and I just feel that we normally work together as two boards that normally work together, and I just feel that if we would have known that you guys and Gal were going to pull out due to the financial, I think that's something we should have known.
Probably, but, like I told you on the phone, in our discussion, we all agreed we were willing to put in the money that it was gonna take to file appeal. But as soon as it came to the point where we were gonna have to spend more, we were done. We couldn't obviously say that in an open meeting, because then our appeal meant nothing, because the state knew we weren't gonna do anything. So, you know, should we have come to you and told you that? I don't know. I mean, I think this is more of a communication issue between our boards than anything else.
Well.
You know, and it's, it's.
I'd like to say something. So in the, in the March meeting, Gary Cupford came to our, our meeting. And then, and so, and that's, that's when the idea was born, to discuss the continuance of the appeal. And we were advised, hey, it doesn't make any sense for the select board to possibly file their own appeal against the bridge project, and the planning commission to be over here in parallel efforts. So Gary, Gary's way, said, hey, it would make a lot more sense if you guys would come together, we'd file one appeal. And that's when we became aware of the time, time constraint, because the Act 250 gave their decision, we had to appeal within a certain span of time. So we had to have an emergency meeting in order to, to meet that. And everybody in the planning commission walked out, for good reason, with the impression that we were voting for the appeal, and that the select board was going to vote for the appeal as well. And we made end roads to make sure that you guys had the ability to meet, and you did, you met earlier, so you could get the appeal in on time. So here we are, as a planning commission, at the end of March. And we did, and Gary sat right there and said, and this is, I was a little surprised by this, but he said, hey, this bridge 108 appeal, I don't know that much about it. So I believe the conversation was predominantly between Rob and Gary, in that he would need to, Gary would need to go through and do some discovery on the project before he could offer an opinion. And it was voted to authorize that, and I think he said it would probably be a couple of days. Gary did forewarn us with select board folks present, or at least some, I was, I was in a video I conferenced in, is that Gary said, look, hey, these kinds of appeals, you know, hey, if it goes to court, threw out $32,000. Everybody heard that. We weren't in shock and awe, I think, again, there was some select board members there as well. No one fell off their chair. So again, we all, we all left that meeting with the understanding that the select board and the planning commission was gonna file the appeal. The next thing we found out, and I can speak with certainty with that, the next thing we found out is subsequently after the fact that this whole appeal business is all over and done with, and the reason for it was financial. The planning commission's impression was that the $32,000 to save, maintain an intersection to keep it from being more dangerous than it already is, or more challenging than it already is, is that $32,000 was worth it. We were under the impression that the select board members present possibly felt the same way, since we're all, you know, looking at doing a joint appeal. What we found out was after the fact, again, after the fact is, you guys had a meeting, you looked at it and said, all right, we're withdrawing the appeal. And then, and then we found out, so, and this is just me speaking, I left that March meeting feeling like, with the impression, not feeling, but with the impression that instead of two separate appeals, we're both going to file an appeal and have some continuance with that. So, so now, and now we're finding out, it's all over and done.
I think there's, like, a misconception here with that somehow the select board and the planning commission are equal in towns?
True.
The select board appoints the planning commission. The planning commission can't file the appeal on their own, because they don't have the statutory authority to do it. That would be the select board. The select board are the ones overseeing. They appoint you guys, just like they hire me and Jeff as a zoning administrator. You, you can't do it without them. And, you know, that's.
This, the final say happens with these five folks, not the planning commission.
Dave, I understand, but I've been involved in this for a year and a half, just like the folks behind me.
I understand.
And we've been in lockstep with the select board. And the select board has been in support of this appeal, because up to very recently, within the last couple of weeks, the select board has, has been in lockstep with the perception that this revised intersection is going to increase, you know, increase the level of danger with the intersection and the complexity. So now, again, from the planning commission's standpoint, there's been an about face, rather suddenly, without the precedence of the kind of communication that we're used to having. So I understand, from, from a structural standpoint, and, you know, let's just say, you and I have lived in other towns. We know how other planning commissions conduct themselves, select boards, and DRBs. I understand. But there's been a precedence in the town of Pittsburgh that these boards work very closely together. And there's been radio silence for two weeks on something that has been going on for the last year and a half. So you can, I think you can understand how we're, again, formally, we have no business in filing a formal complaint. It was gonna be through the select board. We understand that.
So I, I think Dave really explained it well, that, you know, there was discussion on the financial side of it, on how much that the board was willing to spend. And like he said, he wanted to show us cards on the, you know, the day that that's made, because what's the point of filing appeal for, like, well, we're gonna do it up to X amount of dollars and then back out of it? You kind of lose your credibility.
Well, Dave, there's absolutely no point in discussing if it's gonna be withdrawn anyway.
Well, that was, that was the discussion. There was a time of the essence on the appeal.
Okay.
We had to get the appeal, we, there was no, there was no room to have another meeting.
Right.
Because Rick brought that up on the time of the essence, when it was gonna need to be done. So that was.
Mark, we made efforts in the March meeting to make sure that that time was provided for.
Yeah.
Because Gary was sitting there saying, we have plenty of time, it's, it's in the meetings. And I'm like, no, Gary, we don't have plenty of time, we have to get in there by next Thursday. Next, or, it was, yeah, it was next Wednesday, and you guys meeting, it was Thursday, and your meeting was going on Wednesday. So, yeah, there was, there was a time constraint.
Yeah.
But I, let me just speak freely. Do you understand our perspective? By getting this after the fact, when we've been working on it for a year and a half, that it's a done deal, it's effectively, this, this appeal has been withdrawn because of Gary Cupford's $3,000 bill that we all voted to approve was at the March meeting. Rob Spensley said, maybe we should hire Rob, you know, hire Cupford for a couple of days to offer an opinion on this. And Gary said, that's gonna take me a couple of days, I really don't know that much about it. That's where the $3,000 came from. I'm not surprised by the $3,000.
No, the $3,000 was in the last month.
No, but that, one of them was for a status conference with someone else's attorney, too, that I think happened last, was it last Monday, maybe?
I, I'm gonna go back to it and say, I'm still not surprised by the $3,000 bill. Cupford gave us an indication that that's what it would probably be to do with discovery on it, to be able to provide an opinion. I'm not trying to get caught up on details.
This is after the appeal costs, this isn't before the appeal costs. That's what we're talking about, correct, Dave? I mean, this.
Yeah.
I thought it was 3,000 total, that's what has gone.
It is 3,000.
It was, it was around 1,000 to file the appeal.
Yeah.
And then after the appeal was filed, we got another 2,000.
And that was out to, for him to?
That was, that was mainly taking calls from other attorneys.
On the 108 project or on the Hootley project?
On the 108 project.
Okay. Could I speak?
Sure.
Okay. I have the bills here, dated 5/2/23. They were gotten from the town office. It says, review documents, make revisions, prepare certificate of service, telephone conference with Carol at Attorney Dumont's office. E-file notice of appeal with court e-pel. Two and a half hours, that was on 4/1. On the 4/4/23 bill, paralegal, reveal of appeal, format revisions, prepare certificate of service, telephone conference with Caroline at Attorney Dumont's office regarding e-filing email to all interested parties. Conway's filed their appeal two weeks before the town did. This was.
Who's Dumont?
This was Dumont, is my attorney. Okay? He's the opponent attorney. We use Jim Goss, we use Dumont, and we use another one on right away. Okay. So this clearly says that this is Gary Cupford calling my attorney, speaking with Carolyn about notice of appeal and court email to interested parties. This is Gary Cupford calling my lawyer, not my lawyer calling him. Now, my lawyer is on vacation until tomorrow. And I, for the record, I'm Rick Conway, I'm not speaking for the planning commission. I spoke with Alicia, I had to go down to help my sister, I spoke with Dave Mills, and I spoke with Mark Winslow about it, because I got notified about it. So my lawyer will be back tomorrow to bring everybody up to speed. My lawyer took the lead in trying to get everyone together for a pre-hearing conference before the judge. The state's attorney couldn't make the meeting. I have the email in here from my lawyer that said he wasn't happy with the, the judge was not happy with AOTs not participating in the conference and not being available to meet with me and Gary last week, and reluctantly rescheduled the conference for June 19. So originally, my understanding of where this was going, I was asked if I would be willing to participate in mediation. And I, we are. That can save us having to go full-blown court? Why not? The state doesn't seem to be leaning that way. State seems to be, I don't, I, and I can't answer for the state, but their, but their position is clearly spelled out here. Now, the town would also be able to participate in the mediation, and I believe that was, that was said. Like you said, you spend your money, and you weren't gonna say that you were just gonna do that, you give away your position. It's, we're not gonna release our appeal. And in listening to what, you know, you people are saying, you filed, my understanding is, is that you filed the appeal on behalf of the select board, the planning commission, and the townspeople. That's who you represent. While we were appointed by you, you people are elected by the townspeople. I feel bad that there's animosity that's come, that's coming in here, because we've had good communication. Tom was at the Act 250 hearing, Alicia, you were at the Act 250 hearing, and you guys sat, sat through it, and we should have requested that it be held another day.
Yep.
The issues have not changed. What has happened is, some different individuals have been involved in this process. And now, we're gonna have to deal with, you know, wherever, wherever this goes. But it was a much stronger case with, because my understanding is, the town withdrew because of financial concerns. And I can understand, because, boy, we shelled out a lot of money, we're gonna shell out a hell of a lot more. But Gary, Gary stood here and, or sat there and gave out an amount of money, and, you know, some people have said this, that, I've added it up, it looks to me like the town has spent $3,200 with Gary Cupford, I've got a concern there might be a double charge here, and I can, you know, show you guys this after, which I just read from. So I don't have a problem with my lawyer giving them the certificate of service and all those names, because there's a hell of a lot of people that had to be on there, and Gary was running down to the wire on that, on that appeal. Somehow, some people have come in here and made a lot of allegations, and I can't seem to get them to step up for it, but eventually, I think it'll, it'll probably come around. Then I have some sort of conflict of interest. Rick and Sandy Conway's are citizens in this town, we're taxpayers in this town, and we've been so fortunate to have made a living in this town. And we've tried, tried to give back. We went through the town report, you know, from July 2019 to June 30, 2020. The planning commission had a budget of $7,900, and $3,800 was expended. So that left $3,942 that year that didn't get spent. Then, July 1, 2020, June 30, 2021, planning commission had a budget of $6,350, $2,209 was expended, $4,141 was not spent. July 1, 2021, June 30, 2022, planning commission, $6,800 for a budget, $3,746 was expended, leaving $3,054. The sum of those three totals in those three physical years that I just named is $11,137 that was not spent. And that was all budgeted. So obviously, it was used someplace else, whatever. So unfortunately, if the money had been in there, like a sinking fund to buy a truck and so forth, those, those expenses could have been offset. Now, Chuck mentioned the zoning issues. Now, Chuck mentioned the zoning issues. And if you look at the zoning, you can see where $18,000, I'm sorry, $4,000 was budgeted for legal expenses. $6,000 was expended in that 1920. Then, when we jumped over to the next one, we had, let's see, $4,000 budgeted for legal fees. Only 950 were used in that year. And then I think everybody knows where this one's going to be in 2021, 2022. $4,000 was budgeted and $12,105 for the legal. And it's really unfortunate because this is going to affect the town. You know, what's done, if they prevail down there, that is what the town is going to have to live with from that point on until it's changed. None of the issues have changed. It's the same agency that did segment one. And I watched the videos on people coming in here to the select board meeting, talking about accidents up on top of the hill with a new redesign of the highway. This is the same people. This is the same design. And, you know, it seems like there are some people that think you can shut people's water off or shut their air off. I don't know where it comes from. The government serves us, not the other way around. And we have very valid issues. We have what I hope is the best money can buy for this attorney that's representing us. And this attorney is going to be very specific about the state following the law. They're out of line. They're wrong. We beat them on the right of way. There's 400 people that signed that petition. That's 400 people. That's not 10,000 people, but 10,000 people go through that intersection. And that's why I have tried to get my point across, but yet still staying removed as far as, you know, our personal concerns down there. You people have been listening to concerns in here about adjoining landowners. What about the impact on the business down there? I'll deal with that, big boy. I can handle it. But the town, but it's still a safety issue. Still got to drive down there. You know, maybe if everybody down here got in their vehicles and drove through where their level of services indicated that intersection down there is an E in the afternoon. That's the worst, that's the worst that it can be. And you know what the state says right in their testimony? Well, it's already an E intersection. We're just going to take the wait time from 33 seconds up to 44 seconds. Well, that's for one car waiting. If you have cars queued back, it could be 10 minutes. And then when people get to that point, they're going to take chances. You pulling out of there now? I've got a trailer.
Rick, I did say in the beginning, we're not going to just go over this. We're aware.
I understand. So, I just want to say that I think that the legal expenses, yes, I know. They are expensive. But had these monies and the planning commission's budget for legal expenses in 2022 are down to $500.
Now.
That's for the budget for the next coming year.
For the next coming year. And then the year before that, it's, let's see, don't want to be wrong, $500. Okay? So, you know, there was, there was an issue in here. I sat here and I listened. I didn't say anything. I saw Dave drop his head about the sander. It was a wrong sander. Town ended up having to pay $5,000 for a sander. I made the mistake when I was talking to one of you guys about saying, "My wife's car costs $30,000." You know, how much does your, I should have said, "My zero turns." You know? Look how much a damn zero turn costs. $20,000. And it wasn't met personally. What it was meant is, what is $3,000? Look at these salaries during the town report. You know, this isn't going to be cheap. But the thing of it is, is, I think the problem is, if the town, if the town is still behind it, and we are successful in overturning it, and it has to go back and restart the process because the state did not follow the law. And that's what my lawyer is going to try to get across to a judge. And I really would have appreciated, would have, to have the select board and the townspeople, because the townspeople have their position on it. The planning commission has been worn ragged with it for a year and a half. It's just the way that it is. And nothing was done about what happened down there in segment one. And now I have to deal, now I have to deal with it.
All right. We're going to, I think, thank you. We're going to wrap that up.
All right. Can I just say one more thing? I think the board needs to look at the scoping report for, I believe it's segment two through the village, and notice that the other two greens in town, the one in front of the library and the one in front of Kamutas, are going to be very well-used and may be removed.
Okay.
So, I think the board needs to look at that. So, that, this debate isn't going to end down there. I think when that group gets involved.
Well, you were going to get me that information.
Yeah, I didn't, I haven't.
Okay, that's fine.
But we will. We'll get it to you.
All right.
Yes, I may be way out on the appeal here, but I'm not on the planning commission. I'm not. I'm just a citizen of the town. But I guess as a taxpayer, I look at $30,000, or it probably would have been, ended up more than that. But I think when you're talking about the tires, I think the last meeting was going to be, what, $55,000? Or sort of like, maybe the townspeople would have had liked a little bit more input as to, do we think it's worth our tax dollars to pay to get this intersection the way we all feel it would be safer? But it wasn't on the agenda. And I know you said they had to go into executive session because you had to talk to your attorney. But on the other hand, it seems like the citizens should have a little bit of say in where our money goes. And I think a lot of people in town would have been willing to pay that and more to have the safe intersection that I go deal with almost not every day, but often. And I guess I just am kind of disappointed that that major decision was made in executive session with no public input.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's, we're going to move on to the Otter Creek Watershed Insect Control District vote to add Proctor to the district. Steven, did you want to, or actually, I should say, does anybody have any questions of Steven? He's our rep.
She's our rep.
Well, I am too. But you're on the other, yeah. But does anyone have any questions about Proctor being added to the district and what that means?
Well, I would hope that it would maybe even out expenses, spread the expense a little more. Or is it just?
I think it'll reduce, the budget is now in a new format where they separate out the larva sighting costs, the adult sighting costs, and the overhead. Proctor has been paying on a sort of rental basis for the costs. With the new format, they're also going to be contributing to the overhead. So, that should reduce, take a bit of pressure off the other member towns, if that's the.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm glad they finally got on board. So.
I don't want to interrupt you, but going back to the bridge, do you guys have anything you want to say to us about it before that gets wrapped up? I mean, we've all sort of expressed our perceptions of it. Do you have any feedback you'd like to give us? Like, that's just going to be the way it is? Or we should do something different? Or we're entertaining other, any other ideas?
I mean, we made an unanimous decision. I don't know.
What, do you, if the bridge project is going to go through, do you have any other ideas? Or are there any other options being explored? It was just a strange way to end the call thing.
Oh, I just, the whole point of you being on the agenda was just, we wanted, we knew you were upset. We wanted to hear you. So.
And like I said earlier.
That's, you know.
A communication thing. I mean, we need to, you know, go back to communicating like we used to. So.
Okay. All right. Well, I would just like to say on a follow-up to Leanne's point, is it would have been, maybe this should have gone before a town vote. Maybe it still can. I don't know. I know that there could be a petition filed for a decision by a number of the registered taxpayers. That way, there you get the whole town's input on it.
No.
You know, no disrespect to you guys. I mean, I understand the money part of it, believe me. It just, and it's coming on more. But I just, I just think it's so important for me to continue.
It seems like to me, as just a citizen, that your, don't, your purview is not the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh. That's not part of your.
Of course it is.
It sounds like the money is.
That's number one. I'm in favor of slip lane. And my opinion's never changed on that.
No, I think you'll find every one of us is in favor of the slip lane. But there just comes a point where how, how far do we take this down the road? You know?
If you're not, if you're in favor of keeping the slip lane, why'd you vote to?
Because that's my personal. I've got to look, as an elected official, I've got to look at what's best for the town of Pittsburgh. And is it, no, please let me finish. So, is an endless drain to a lawyer or lawyers, is that good for the town of Pittsburgh versus, okay, the state has made this decision? You know, how long do you fight City Hall, I guess is my thing. It could go on for years. That bridge could fail at any time. I think we're all in agreement. The bridge needs to be fixed. What they really should do, fix the bridge and leave the intersection alone and then fight that out. But they are holding us hostage on the bridge. If that bridge fails, this town is screwed. Because there's no way around us. Till you go to 22A.
They'll put a temporary.
Well, they are too. But we're going to suffer more than the state is.
They'll put a Bailey Bridge in.
The temporary bridge is already, the utilities are all.
Right. But you aren't going to be putting, you know, huge trucks across that problem.
Joe, had Joe had something to say?
As most of you know, I have been opposed to their design. I'd like to see the slip lanes, slip lanes stay because I use it. And I run a big truck. We have a small business. We're in town, and not just my truck, there's many trucks that come to our place. But the reason, and personally, I apologize to the planning commission, that it looks like we pulled the rug out from under you. I got, in my mind, I feel that way. And I'm sorry for that. The reason, as I look back at it, we had a very short time to file that appeal, which we did. And then we start looking at, I start looking at it from, we're spending a lot of money, squabbling with the state. We got to deal with the state for the rest of the town when they get ready to do something. Let's cut our losses and try to move forward. I got a feeling, and I may be wrong, if that turns out to be a real problem down here with their new design, they might, they're going to have room enough down there so they can redo with lines their traffic pattern. And if it turns into a disaster where there's lots of problems, and it might, the accident rate has been pretty low right now, as far as I know. But if that accident rate took a big jump, they might have to re-change their lines and stuff to switch that around to where they could improve it. And that slip lane, I think if they determine had to go back, I think that they've got room enough they could put that back after it's all done. Like we just said, build a bridge and worry about the intersection afterward, that's probably a good way to go. But that apparently is not the way they're willing to go.
Yeah. I guess I'd say.
Joe, the new bridge that they're going to put in there is going to be narrower. The bridge that's in there right now, when you come into it on the north side, is narrower. It flares out as you go through it. The bridge that they're proposing is going to be a pre-cast bridge, and it's going to be a certain width.
All the way through?
Yes. There'll be no slip lane. No, that's not, that's, just so you know.
Right, well.
And that's from my, that's from my highway engineer.
I'm not surprised. I mean, you put a lot of time and research into it. Now, I'll take your word for whatever you're saying on it. But that's just my personal feeling.
Yeah, I would like to move.
Thanks for listening.
All right. You guys have a good evening.
Do you have something to say?
Just something really quick. The state has not even tried, much less been successful at trying to convince the people of Pittsburgh that their design is better than the current design. Could they somehow come back and convince the people of Pittsburgh that they have a better design?
No, I have actually asked, I think, I've asked Dave to see if that, we could get somebody to come back down here and explain it. Because I just think it also was not explained well by the original engineer.
And if they need a test, we'll put a barrier across that exit slip lane right now and make people right now make that 110-degree turn. And they'll find out quickly how terrible an idea that is.
Yeah. So, no, we are hoping to continue to work with the state to try to see if we can get whatever we can get.
The bridge needs to be fixed before somebody ends up in the water.
Well, that's, I know. And so, we also just want to move along and get the bridge done.
Bottom line, unfortunately. And they're holding us hostage with the intersection being part of the bridge.
But the worst part of it was, was at the site visit. They were showing the upstream side of the bridge. We said, "Okay, let's go over to the other side." And they said, "Oh, no, you don't want to go over there." And then over and looked, and of course, where all the concrete was. And they have said that the reason that the bridge is in the condition that it's in is because of lack of maintenance. One of the alternatives was to replace the mat on the bridge because the superstructure is okay. If it wasn't, they would close it.
Okay.
And it's unfortunate that, you know, people haven't listened. Dave, when I had the first, when Sandy and I were asked to come into your office, the first thing you told us was the state is not going to change that, not going to change that road down there.
That's not what I said.
That's exactly, did he say that, Sandy?
I can show you the scoping study from April of 2000. It's been in this office since then. Because it says right on it, "Town office copy, do not remove from office."
Okay.
It shows that intersection almost identical as what the proposed one that everyone thinks changed in 20-some year. It's the same exact thing. You know, the, I don't want to debate it because I know the board wants to move on.
Yeah.
But there have been a lot of changes to it.
Okay, I appreciate it, Alicia. I really do.
Yeah, thank you. All right, thank you.
You will not be involved in the legal part of it.
Sorry about this.
Yeah, it sucks.
Thank you.
What do you mean by that, Rick?
You'll find out.
Sorry to get.
Going to make it?
No.
Okay, we're ready to go.
Thank you very much, Alicia, Dave, Joe.
See you, Chuck.
Yeah, see you.
Okay, good to go.
So, sorry about that, Steven.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so.
So, what's before you basically is the town proctor, you know, they're joining a municipal district, which is what the insect control district is. There's a state law and the, you know, the process is the town proctor voted at the town meeting to join. The insect control district then had to properly warn a vote on admitting proctor. So, we didn't have a meet, we didn't vote on it in March. We voted on it at April 20th meeting. And we eked out a quorum, but it was unanimous, you know, approve proctor. And so, now the vote goes to all the member towns. And so, a letter was delivered to Alicia Malley, asking her to schedule a vote. And now you guys.
Here we are.
The Pittsburgh Select Board will vote on it. We have, I think, the bylaws or the, you know, the amended agreement that the Select Board approved a couple of years ago specifies a two-month window for a vote on admitting proctor. And once two-thirds of the town, which is actually four-fifths of the towns, have approved it, then proctor would become a member and, you know.
So, I will make a motion to admit proctor to the mosquito district.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience.
It's always interesting to see a board at work.
And we have a meeting tomorrow, right?
Yes, we have a meeting tomorrow. Do you want a ride?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure. Location of potential police station.
So, Chief Orko asked if I could start this conversation of him and the.
Have a good night, Steven.
He ran opportunities to see if we could fund a police station somewhere in the area. And we've been talking a lot about maybe off the garage in the back here because there's so much space really in this back parking area. But he was hoping to just like get some sort of, you know, not really approval, but blessing from the board to, we could continue with a certain area so that if we wanted to draw a site plan up or something, we'd have, we'd have it on a piece of paper to apply for a grant, and they could actually see what we're looking at doing. So.
They definitely need a new space.
Yeah.
Joe?
There has been some mention of joining in with the first response down there for a police station. Is that totally out of the, out of?
I have been told that there was some reason why the police department couldn't be down there. The.
There's some talk about the cement pad, right? There's some talk about the cement pad, right? Because didn't you bring that up a bunch?
Well, yeah, I don't think, and it's too bad Chuck isn't still here because we could ask him. As long as that cement's been exposed to the elements, I don't think anybody's going to build on it. I don't think they'll build on it.
But the location, will I permit it or?
Well, that's what I'm wondering.
That's cracked and everything.
Yeah.
It is. But I mean, I don't know why that would discount the location altogether. I mean, so new concrete pad, we need to go down, but, so I don't know. But did Chief Orpil prefers this site? Did he?
Well, we talked about that the garage was already out here for them and that this, you know, it'd still be sort of in the complex.
Yeah, okay.
This garage, when it was first built, it was intended for the recreational department to be able to store some of their equipment in there. And that I don't believe has ever happened.
Everybody else has taken over.
Everybody else took it over.
Pretty packed right now.
Yeah. Not with wreck stuff.
Is there enough, is there enough room back here?
So I think if, if the building came a little bit forward from the garage, there would be room. I mean, it's not, this is the thing, we're just looking at some site to actually come up with a building size and designed to just be able to apply to see if there's money out there.
So it'd have to creep into the parking lot? Is that what you're saying?
Parking lot's pretty wide out there.
I know, but I'm still.
Well, we talked about it too, like, you know, the parking lot's never full.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's pretty, there's a lot of space out back. Because I think the school is like right at the tree line where they own the property. So it's pretty, it's not, there's not much depth back there after that.
Is the town on behind the, with the?
Right away through there. I'm not sure where our line is this way.
It's pretty close, like the tree line is about where it is. Mike and I looked it up. It's, it's kind of just behind the sand pile there. There's not a lot of room.
Okay.
So, and the school owns everything around us too.
Yeah.
Maybe they sold us a couple hundred feet for a dollar.
Maybe.
I bet they would. They're going to be looking for some money too sometime, I'm sure. I'm sure we could make arrangements.
We could look at other sites like, I mean, we're just trying to come up with something, come up with an idea for a building to.
Well, yeah, I mean, we're talking the extra fire station over in Florence, do you add it on with that? You just make one big building with some, you know, garage, a bay for the fire, a bay for.
Tom and I went and looked at it last week, actually.
I think we have two and a half acres or plus.
Yeah, there's a lot of potential there.
There's a lot of potential there.
Is that a logical spot? Just as a question? I mean, that's a ways away from the activity.
Well, what, two minutes?
I'm just, I'm asking the question because you've got to cross the creek, you go up through there, it's.
Railroad and everything.
It seems, but it's true. Seems like it. But it would help with our thought process of having a bridge from top to top rather than going down in that depth. If we had, you know, police and fire over there, it would be a little incentive for them to build the bridge that way.
Bet they never do though.
Oh, I don't know. It can't be any more expensive because they got to put a temporary in of some type.
I think it probably would be.
What?
Going top to top?
Oh, yeah.
Be a lot more expensive.
Than putting in a temporary bridge and taking it out? I mean, you could use the old bridge till the new one was built. So.
I don't know, I'm just, I don't know, I'm not a bunch of.
Well, I, no, but I'm thinking.
I put a stick down.
Half the price of that bridge is going to be putting the temporary in and taking it out. Because it can't be shut down for two or three years.
Would you be okay if we just entertained like a few of those options just to see what's viable?
I think that's a great idea.
Because I think over there, like, it would be more of a multi-use anyway.
Right.
And even if we're down at rescue, like, that could be the same way, so.
Right. And which is what the state likes, is a whole bunch of different things in one building.
Does that make for more grants when you make a multiple?
Well, it's easier to apply for it when we have a site that's designed, that's specific for it, so that they know that we're not just trying to get money to go look for a place to build a building.
Right, right, okay.
Yeah, I think we could say we have some options.
Well, we have three options, basically.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, that's really all it was, was just kind of a, let you know what we've been talking about.
All right, thank you. All right, well, our one and only communications district rep has resigned, so we need a representative. We still need two, right?
You appointed me at the last, one of the last ones to take the.
Oh, that's right. So we just need an alternate?
We need an alternate. Or they can be the regular and I could be the alternate too. That wouldn't bother me, so.
Um, so I guess let's all try to drum up some volunteers.
Now, why did he get done?
I think he's moving.
He's moving, oh, he's moving. Because I know they've got a new chairman. Somebody else has taken it over.
Yeah, because it was him.
Yeah, they just did that at the last meeting. So one thing you guys had asked me, and maybe it was Mark, on like what was going on with the build outs for. Now, that was Pittsburgh. So I didn't really get anything from the meetings on that, but I did call Regina Spillane, who is the one that does Phidium Fiber for Consolidated, just to see what their plans were for down here. They did look at some areas where they were going to definitely build out, like on East Pittsburgh and on like Route 3. But she said if you go onto like the Phidium website now, you can type your address in and it'll say if you're, if you can be served by it. And there's actually more than I thought there would be, the properties that would be served by Phidium, so.
You're only looking on this side of the creek though? Because it's people on the other side that are having the most issues.
Well, they do it Route 3 in East Pittsburgh, so I don't know, like, they're like, you know, if someone has a half-mile driveway, like, that's still probably not going to happen. So, yeah, you know.
It's close as ever.
That's true.
But started the discussion with her again, just to say, hey, you know, what's going on down here? And so, you know, I think, I think we could keep that open dialogue with them and see who's building out and what. I know they're doing more stuff in like Hubbardton, so that might get down, you know, I don't know how they plan their build outs because I know they, you know, they had Brandon like two years ago with 24 miles and it kind of went out like a spider. So I'm sure they're starting to add on to head south, but, but I'll, I'll keep you guys updated with whatever I find out about it, so.
I know, I did just read, I think it was in the Herald, that our state auditor had some issues with the whole, the way this whole thing was going on and being mishandled.
Well, you know, there was a lot of money put out there when COVID first hit because
of the schools and the, you know, the lack of folks being able to do remote learning.